...meeting is meant to be an educational opportunity for both the public and the city. I hope to keep business at hand courteous, calm, and constructive, not destructive. We want this to be a positive meeting. There will not be formal minutes of the meeting, but Sandy Crumel has agreed to take informal notes, so we will try to jot down some of the questions, answers, and comments, but they will be informal by a lone inspector to get each and every one. They're going to be moved right along. I also currently don't have a plan for any particular rules of order, but do intend to stay on topic. The topic tonight is the city's fiscal year 2012 proposed budget, so we're not going to be talking about dogs and cats or anything else. We're going to focus on the budget. James Donald asked for this meeting, and we have some informational information I'm going to have him read in a bit.
Good evening. My name is James Donald. I'm like the City of Valley County and the Valley County Board of the Land and Superior Facilities. Well, that's something you hear from cities like us, the board of the city. The city of Oregon has complicated the maximum levy limit.
Dave?
I don't think there is.
I apologize, you do not have a mic system, so we'll try to speak up.
We cannot collect any more property taxes without having the vote of the public. The Budget and Audit Committee of the City Council has spent a lot of time evaluating additional revenue sources, reduction in expenditures, or the general fund. This is the portion of the city budget that is funded by property tax. Utility department is funded by revenue from electric, water, sewer services. Although the utility department assists the general fund in many ways, the council has not been in favor of utilizing the utility revenue for operation of the street, police, cemetery, park, and pool. Initially, the city was looking at the property shortfall approximately $580,000 for general fund. This means that if the city spent everything that was budgeted, our revenues would be $580,000 less than the expenditure. After extensive consideration, the committee had recommended the budget to the council with a shortfall of approximately $268,000. As part of their recommendation, the Budget and Audit Committee is recommending that the city consider contracting with Valley County for law enforcement services. The purpose of this meeting is to receive input from the public regarding the budget and the possibility of contracting with the county for law enforcement services. At this point, nothing in the budget is final. The council continues to evaluate expenditures, including employee wages and benefits, repairs and equipment, supplies, street, park, and golf course maintenance, and services, including police protection and the swimming pool. A public hearing will be held on September 7th, 2011, at 7:45 PM regarding the city budget. Following this hearing, the council will consider adopting the budget. I would like to point out, the council is currently in the process of considering ordinance that would place Keno on the ballot. This would be an additional source of revenue for the general fund. The council is reading this ordinance on three separate occasions. The first reading took place at the August council meeting. It is possible that a special mail election could take place in early December. We encourage the public to consider they would support Keno as an additional revenue source. As I said, the purpose of this meeting is to obtain input from the public regarding the budget and the possibility of contracting with the county law enforcement. We will not be reviewing specific budget line items, as this has been covered extensively at previous public meetings of Budget and Audit Committee. However, you will be given an opportunity to express your feelings and provide suggestions. Please come to the front to address the council in public, so everyone can hear and begin by stating their name. Please do not interrupt others while speaking, and keep your comments brief and to the point, so everyone has time to speak. Feel free to point out what services you currently receive that you value the most. For example, street maintenance, snow removal, street marking, street lighting, police protection, parks, cemetery, and golf course maintenance, and the swimming pool. We do not intend that this meeting is turned into a debate, nor do we want to hear personal attacks on individual council members, city, or county employees. Our goal is to hear constructive ideas and suggestions from our constituents. We want to thank you for your participation.
And I'd also like to announce as a courtesy, if you would go ahead and switch the ringers off on your cell phones, I would appreciate it and that is rough. This meeting is for citizens, and we've made our comments, so we've got a proposed budget that we're looking at, and now we're asking for any input from you. So if you'd like to step forward, give us your name, and make your statements, and or comments or questions. Who wants to be first? Get you off to the side here so the citizens can hear as well.
My name is Bob Sevenger, and I'm currently chairman of the Valley County Board of Supervisors. And I didn't necessarily want to be first, but I'd like to first thank the council for hosting the meeting, and I appreciate that you take the time to do that. But I thought some of you, in regard to the consolidation question, I could give you just a little bit of background from the county perspective on what's taking place. And Jayden indicated keeping it simple, so I'll go through this as fast as I can. You know, early in the summer, the county was approached by a city council member, and the sheriff's department was approached, to provide the cost for a possible consolidation between the city of Oregon Police Department and the sheriff's department. So the chair, Casey Halbert, county clerk, Jeanette Lindsay, Helen Cullors, who is here, who was vice chair of the Valley County Board of Supervisors, and myself, chairman of the Valley County Board of Supervisors, met to discuss the possibility of the consolidation and also the cost of such consolidation. And the figure provided to the city was $250,000 a year for three years, or until the end of 2014, which would correspond to the end of the present sheriff's elected term. And I thought, at any time with a six-month or a year clause in it, that the city could opt out. And we should know before the filing deadline, I think, for the next term, which begins in 2015, whether just, if the consolidation does take place, whether it should continue. Maybe some of you don't presently know, but we have an interlocal agreement with the city board right now on partial consolidation of the communications. Where the sheriff's department had us a few communications in the evening hours, and then I believe on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We had asked for a little increase in that from the city, because it hadn't been looked at for a number of years. It presently was at $7,500, and it would be increased to $12,000 if they agreed. Of course, if the consolidation would take place, then this would be eliminated also. The proposal that we came up with as a committee was presented, we've discussed it several times, it was discussed again yesterday at the Valley County, or meeting yesterday, or ready to be scheduled meeting. For the record, a motion was made to extend this offer of $250,000 to the city for their consideration. The motion passed six in favor and none against, and one supervisor was asked. You know, it seems like this has been discussed, it's kind of unfortunate, but there's a lot of rumors and misinformation out there and character assassination that shouldn't be part of this, but it seems like has happened. You know, one councilman stated that the county was sitting back looking at their lips, waiting to get control, and that is as far from the truth as it can be. The county is extending an offer to the city to help with a possible solution to some of their budget shortfalls. It is now up to the city council and decide, you know, how to proceed. Another comment that I've heard was that people that live outside the city limits would now be assuming some of their responsibility for paying law enforcement within the city. And again, that's not true. The figures that we provided would take care of the law enforcement in the city, there would be no additional taxes at all assessed to anybody that lies outside the city limits. On our present board, we're made up of four people that live in a rural area and three that live in the city, so you know that the four people in the rural area isn't going to help fund the city taxes on that. And we've got seven votes of four to three, you can see why, it's not going to happen. You know, the people that live within the city do pay county taxes, so we're already paying part the sheriff's department. We already, you know, we've got approximately a $2 million budget for the county between the road and everything else, and so the people in the city do pay county taxes. However, the people in the county outside the city limits do not pay any city taxes, and with any consolidation, they wouldn't need them. Another question I've heard is, you know, how could the county possibly provide the same quality of service for $150,000 less than what it currently costs the city? Currently, as we all know, there's a chief of police, and there's a part-time dispatcher, and there's three full-time officers. If there was a consolidation, what's been proposed is the sheriff's department would add three additional officers to their present four, so there would be seven total. And our present sheriff feels that there would be, there would not be any kind of reduction in services to the city or the county. Another factor is that the county salaries and our benefit package are considerably lower than the city, so that's where the savings comes up, and that's a $150,000 difference. You know, would it work? You know, I know it works other places with consolidation work. You know, I feel it could work, it's going to take a lot of cooperation, and, but it's, you know, we presently contract with Arcadia and North Loop, Shawan Forest, and I believe the sheriff's department meets monthly with the village boards. And at times, right now, I think that, it's my understanding, you know, both departments, the sheriff's department, both North Loop and Arcadia, are very satisfied with the services that they have. You know, obviously, Oregon's a lot larger, we've got a lot more people, there's more problems, and there's a lot of details that need to be worked out. But I feel confident that if it were to proceed in this direction, that a committee from the city council, a committee from the county board, I'm sure that they could sit down and work the details out. You know, obviously, we're all in this thing together. You know, it's a shame when you're talking about people's jobs and cutting, but over the years, at one time, our road department had twenty-some employees, and now we're down to ten or eleven, and, you know, things change. And the issue to me isn't at all about control. You know, the county board isn't looking for being in control of anything. You know, you, the people of Valley County, the taxpayers and the voters, you're the ones that have control. If a consolidation takes place, you go to the, you vote, you elect the chief law enforcement officer of the county, you know, it's up to you. Control isn't anything that the county board is looking for at all. You know, to me, the issue's about our responsibility as elected officials to provide the best services we can, possible, and that's what your taxpayers deserve, you know, to be as efficient as possible with the hard-earned tax dollars, you know, that you provide. You know, the city came to the county, we've extended an offer and willingness to work together. Whatever the council decides is fine with us. You know, we're not pushing one way or the other on this thing. Whatever they decide is fine, but, you know, I really think there's resources we can share, and hopefully, we can along and share them. And, you know, I don't know if anybody's had any questions to what I've said, I'd be happy to answer them, but I thank you very much for your time, and I can appreciate you hosting the meeting.
Can I ask a question? I'm following a telephone call, I'm a citizen of Oregon. I just found out within the last 28 hours that we were in the red so bad. Did anybody see it coming? Has it anybody kind of adjusted the budget as time went by? I mean, this just has fallen out of the sky, right? It's been coming down the pipe, has it not? I mean, you can't just all of a sudden say the $250,000 in the hole.
We've been facing a city shortfall for a number of years. We've made up a lot of the deficit by control of spending, but this year in particular, we had a valuation decline, and we had a loss of state aid. And those two issues alone weren't the contributing factor, but they assisted in putting us in worse than normal shape. As stated earlier, we had about a $580,000 shortfall that our account controls, we had to deal with. We have a certain amount of, of, what's the term? Yeah, cash reserve, thank you, that we have, you know, available, but we can't keep taking hits on our cash reserve. So the Budget Finance Committee has been working on this year's budget for a couple of months now. We went through the budget, we looked at each budget item, we were making cuts of $1,000 here and $1,000 there, but at the end of our first phase of going through the budget, we weren't coming up with the dollars that we needed. So we had a reevaluation with all the department heads within the city. They revised their budgets, they come back to barebone budgets. We got that deficit down further, but still not even, so that's when we started looking at more drastic action. So it has not been, you know, something that just came to us this year. We've been facing it for some time.
Yeah, you want to start?
Yep.
Well, I guess, since the time I was a young teenager, a very young teenager, my father always told me, "You have to budget." And for all my life, I tried to budget. And I know there comes a point in your business matters, and I'm a businesswoman as well in town, there comes a point where you start to feel you're walking on thin ice. And you're really kind of, I feel personally, whether it's our community, or your own personal business, or your personal life, when you feel that little edge coming, you really have to, first of all, put the brakes on. And I guess, I'm kind of confused, because if this is not a bomb that just fell out of the sky that's been coming, I have never seen a freeze on wages, a freeze, I mean, the word freeze, whether it's local, national, state, or whatever, the word freeze, which I heard a lot in the early seventies, is a long part of the English language, where you put a freeze, and then that, it stops the rushing horses, and then after that, you start saying, okay, I guess some of my things are, I mean, if we're in a real bad pit hole, do we really need a swimming pool? I guess, as a mother of four children, I think we could have lived without a pool, you know, things that demand money, that we really, as a whole country, it's not just our community, we've got to start saying, hey, can we live without this? I think we can. And, you know, mosquitoes, it's nice not to have them, but if it helps the budget, can't we use our own yard guard by ray to kill the mosquitoes when we're outside our own homes? I mean, we can afford to visit as families. But like the police department, I kind of have a concern about that. I'm very proud of our local county chief of policemen, he's been very good in our issues that we've had in our neighborhood, and I really, I guess as a grandparent, a parent, and so forth, I have a concern that if he is with the sheriff's department, I feel if they have to run out to the country, they have to run out into the country. And Oregon will not have the protection that we have in all of the police systems now, because they will have to answer to our sheriff, and they will be taking care of the whole county, not just stores, and that is a concern to mine. But I think, like, when you look at the hospital, when they have budget cuts, which they get a rent or often, a lot of people, like, when I worked there, we had to combine jobs, we had to combine, somebody left, one person picked up the slack, whether you're making hospital beds for all day long, someone leaves, you're just demanded to pick up the slack. If our budget is that tight, I'm just wondering if there's personnel that could be laid off, and people combine job descriptions? Has that ever been a consideration?
All of those, all of those issues have been discussed.
Because like I said, I didn't know within, since the last 28 hours, I never was, we were in that bad of a pickle, but, like, do we really need expensive cop cars? I mean, I see SUVs and heavy-duty pickups, which are all gas hogs. That does not help the budget, and I wondered, as a taxpayer, how will we be paying for all these new gadgets? And at a town of 2,200 people, we're between two rows of corn, it's not like we're LA or Chicago or New York. Why do we need all the, I'm sorry, I'm from East Coast folks. I just don't see why we need all these heavy-duty police cars, and I sure would like an answer tonight for that question, because I haven't been able to figure it out since I've been watching the prison account. Guess that's all, guys.
I'm not sure he's very ready. Anyone?
As more as someone going out in the county, the way it's proposed to us is, there'll be someone, if it's consolidated, from the sheriff's department, just in Oregon, exact same hours or more than what we're currently getting covered. It has nothing to do with anything they're doing in the county, there would be someone in Oregon now. If there's a emergency in North Loop or Arcadia, and the closest law official is there, is the board police chief or whatever, they go. They need help, they go, and they can help. And they get back as soon as possible, but as far as having someone go in the county, unless an officer needs assistance, there would be somebody there just as much or more than what we're currently getting now.
So as far as police dispatch should be the same, so it's going to be the same as it always has been?
Hours coverage should be the same or a little more.
Again, that's a proposal.
That's a proposal, and I said, yeah, there's no contract yet, and everything is still, you know, in there, but as far as, you know, I always said, I just want to compare apples to apples, so give me what we have, where we at, what would it cost? I don't want to say, well, we want less hours than this, I want to have, what is it the same? We choose to have less hours covered, then to be the price should go down from where it's currently at.
I guess I could still like an answer about our new police vehicles, were those grants? Or did we have to pay more out of our tax?
They were a combination of both. They were funds that were put aside in the city budget, in past city budgets, in a sinking fund, for police equipment, and there were grant funds available as well. So all the cars, all the pickups were bought to the proper procedures that were through the city budget. Now as far as the gear or the maintenance or anything like that, I'm not really knowing the specific one. But they were bought in the city.
I'm Josh Schmidt. Instead of cutting, I'm Josh Schmidt. Instead of cutting the Oregon Police Department, can we come up with these funds by going a little bit of funding from, you know, everything, instead of just cutting one major thing, you know, the park, or the pool, or the golf course, we take a little bit of everything and come up with it, or is that how you approach that?
The Budget Finance Committee considered that, you know, we made as lean a budget available as we could, we felt to keep certain services available, there's a lot of opportunities in the city budget to go further without cutting, you know, major services and door personnel. The city council gave the Budget Finance Committee a job, and that was to try to deal with budget deficits. We felt did our job in going through the budget a number of times, working as much as we could to maintain and not affect, you know, a lot of people with our cuts, and we made a proposal, now it's up to the city council to make that final decision. I would like to see.
Did it mention that the city law enforcement paid benefits more than county paid benefits? Was that included in the budget?
That comment was made, I don't know if anyone in the council right now has, has any comment on that.
Everything's still on the table.
Everything's on the table.
I was just curious about this.
I guess just to speak for the Budget Finance Committee, you know, we saw an opportunity to save the city, $150,000, and we felt that's a significant amount of money to, you know, that we couldn't ignore, and that's the reason we brought it forward to the city council. There are good things and bad things about it, and it's not something that the Budget Finance Committee was happy about. We don't want to affect people's lives and their door services, we can help it. We felt that we were just not being able to live within our means, and this was one opportunity. There are others, and there are others that we're considering, but that's the reason for this meeting tonight, is to get your comments on, you know, what services and, services are, yes, are you willing to, you know, partner? Is that an option? We either had the opportunity, we had options to raise the income, well, we can't do it by property tax any further, we're up to the lid. So the other opportunity was Keno, which we're going to put, or try to put on ballot, and as Jay mentioned in his presentation, at our first reading, on presenting Keno to the city as a, bringing efficient income. We can have a town hall meeting, which, you know, we would have to have a vote of the population to go beyond our current lid. Those are the two general opportunities we have for additional funding. The other is to maintain as we have and try to control spending, you know, have a workable budget to keep services as close as we can to the current situation, but we're losing, you know, our, our tech, or our cash reserve. Use that to write a lot of time. It's a big word. One of those brain moments. But the other is to cut, and like I said, this was just an opportunity we thought we had to bring forward, and so I'll quit talking, and we'll go to our next speaker.
Well, my name is Guy Brock. First, I'd like to thank the city council for holding this public forum, the hearing for those taxpayers. And I'd like to thank the Budget Committee for its obvious hard work in its brilliant addressing its budget. I've got copies from Sandy, our clerk, and clearly, looking at those numbers, the Budget Committee's spent a lot of time crunching numbers, and I myself, I can thank them for that. I believe consolidation for law enforcement makes good sense. I think it made good sense two and a half years ago when I asked the council that, to take a serious look at it. In a city the size of Oregon, it just makes good sense. Not only any good economic sense, but I think there's several perks here that we can, we can look forward to. I've always maintained that there's somewhat of a shadow that hangs over our police department in town, being able to actually execute their job fully, by going to the sheriff, by going under the sheriff's department for our police protection. We've got to remove that shadow. The other perk I believe we have is to make the sheriff, the law enforcement, highest law enforcement official in the city accountable to the voters, directly to the voters. As, as far as, I'd like to comment too, as to street improvements, I've seen a marked street improvement, is there a question we've done here, you know, this, this past summer or this spring? Again, I would suggest to the folks that haven't had the opportunity, is get copies of the budget from the previous years and the past year, and let those numbers open. Again, I have to commend the Budget Committee, they've done a good job, and I think you're moving in the right direction, and I would definitely suggest your actions should adopt the present budget that's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's been a long time. I'm very disappointed with the work we've done, as it now functions okay. By the way, I'm Johnny Allen. Also very much against the consolidation. Loss of control, and I don't, I know my father. Loss of control and I don't, I know my father and I understand what you're saying, but I don't mean it that way. What I mean is that simply not at this point, it doesn't have control. Once you say most areas are consolidated, I'd say for three years, you never. Neil, I talked about this, we're nowhere based, we respect the responsibility. I just don't think if you ever resolved it, we'd really be happy with it, uh, to happen. The other thing, these guys look like this, but a lot of the problems we have, places running this time, are because of this, okay? Number one, the two cars we got, somebody should have saw that coming. I know you've been at one man rule for four years and I know that these are one of those, chief, go ahead buy it. Somebody should have saw that coming, half the people in town knew it. Well, that, that was definitely, even though, that's a lot of money to spend. I think we're three of them. Uh, there's money that's, uh, maybe go Brian, for whatever reason, uh, let it go. That's just not the way the shit. The other thing, and I talked to Neil about this before, when I was here for twenty seven years, the police department paid up three people on city council. And it really worked. I was responsible for that, they, like, they had a problem, they were involved, it wasn't like, uh, it is not. Any kind of problem, I kept a praise of what we were doing. I talked to Neil today, I was absolutely amazed that your chief of police does not know how many hours you're working, how many hours they're working. That's, I've never heard of such stuff, that's his job. Not being able to tell you how, you know, how many hours you're working. Don't you think if you let such by you, that you shouldn't? That's what it is. Maybe it's not just me, a lot of guys who have, good people work, work emotionally down. Yeah, I talked to Neil about this, so we feel we have to let go. Good people, we had something, we thought, we should be proud, did we make it safe? Yeah, I guess, yeah. We go like try to break the plan, you find one has their job, try it, it's very, you know, and I don't see that. Now, you're talking two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's the box rate.
Hundred and fifty would bet the difference from first.
Well, yeah, but you got, uh.
It's a proposal, yes, for the, for the.
Consolidation.
Correct.
You kept the three people, there's just three, you're there. You still got control here, here, uh, here. Go ahead, Dave, weren't you talking about two hundred and eighty thousand?
Well, Adam's revised budget that he came back with, with the three people, it was, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, that, did that include thirty-one thousand communications, which have to be added? That was on six thousand, two hundred and forty hours of coverage, uh, which we discussed last year. Yeah, okay, last year they worked nine thousand, one hundred ninety-nine and a half hours. So.
Is everything, is it, is everything the way the audience asked or like that? Do you work all shifts?
Yes.
Yes, I do. I work all shift, just like my office did, I took one weekend of my talk, just like my office did. I was not better than that. You can't treat your people like you're having a kid, this place.
I do have a question, how should I post? Any questions to me?
I just want to make a comment, one is that when budget finance committee looked at the budget, we looked at the budget and the numbers. And we did not look at performance, satisfaction, we have not been splitting our police department with service we receive at all, that's not an issue. So, okay, this was simply a budget decision.
That's my question, you gotta definitely talk to John a little bit more. Okay?
Break your comments. Next.
I, I guess I have another question.
Can I get you to speak up?
You were talking about nine thousand hours, uh, nine thousand.
Nine thousand, one hundred ninety-nine and a half hours, seventy hours they did the last fiscal, not the current one, they're right now, previous one, it's code.
So, so the revision came in with six thousand hours, so.
Six thousand, two hundred and forty.
So we have a, we have, now we have a cut in service.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, there, I, I'm a numbers person, so, like I said, forgive me if I talk too fast. Like I said, if you took his proposed budget, Adam's last revised budget when they were down to three officers, you added in the communications, thirty thousand, nine ninety. The difference in the hours, if you divided it equally amongst three, Adam and a sympathetic, each of them would have to work nine hundred and eighty-six and a half more hours each. In the current rates, that would add fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eleven cents to his proposal. So, I like to do an apple to dapple, so if you added that and communications together, the difference, you know, Bob stated a hundred and fifty off the original budget, that's where it was, it would be a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eleven cents per year savings, so more or less ten grand a month. Like I said, I just, you know. No, if, if anything, the way, you know, again, it's all proposed, nothing's been said, no. You know, we may gain one hour per time, so we might gain three hundred and sixty-five hours over the course of the year. I just want to have apples to apples, this is what it is, I, like I said, I've talked to John many times, uh, we agree to differ on different things, but we still get along and talk and, and we see both sides of the coin. Is there a way to compromise together maybe, but I'm not willing to almost give up three thousand hours and.
And add the services.
You'd be paying sixty, sixty-two thousand more.
Exactly.
Plus lose three thousand hours of service, that's, I'm not, I, I just can't go there.
Why don't they have, we could use the additional one thousand dollars, since we have officers who actually need help.
Yeah.
We had an officer in training this year, so that, that would mean you were paying two officers to take time, so that might help with some of those issues.
Some gives a lot, correct, correct.
And that could happen.
And I want to make it clear too, that when the budget committee forwarded our proposed budget to the council, we did not have the final draft revisions that, uh, have, have the police department. Uh, he made some significant changes on that, but they're still under consideration. It was just that the budget committee had done their work and we were needing to get our recommendation to the city, so. Again, this is a proposed budget, it has not been voted on by the city and it is subject to modification, so there are some other options available to look at, but we wanted to get the input from the public as well before we looked at those other options. And if this proposal is still on the table, as far as I'm concerned. I'm going to hear.
Yes, um, on a scale from one to ten, where I know how I stand with my own personal values, but I'm not clear with this long shell, I didn't realize you were that far in the hole. But I saw it coming with all of what I see in my neighborhood, I mean, the right community, but on a scale from one to ten, could you enlighten all of us, where are we, is it? A four is, are we at a five, or we are above five with a financial crisis?
Financial crisis?
Well, we say we're two hundred and fifty thousand in the hole.
No, I said, we're, we're.
Yeah, so on a scale from one to ten, does this make?
Let's drag some terminology for, what we're looking at is a two hundred and some thousand dollar reduction in our cash reserve. We still have money in the bank, we are not critical or bankrupt or in the red, what we're doing is we're losing equity within the city. So, even with some of the shortfall we're looking at, the controlled spending, the only reason we would hit that limit is if we spent every dollar we put into budget. And what is a budget, a budget is a tool that guides you in your financial decisions made throughout the year, it's an estimate. So, I, really, I guess if I have to put a number on, I, the rest of the city council might disagree with me, but I would say we're probably, is the high number good or bad?
Ten is bad, five is average, below five is not a big concern.
I would probably put us in maybe a three or four, because we do have other options available, we're not destitute. But we're not in a very good position right now and, and trends have not been very good, so that's why we have to make some decisions today.
Okay, so what you're telling me is that we're digging into like a general type fund to build in the gap, because what we have going right here, there's not enough income to continue this level. So we have to go into the general fund to level out our budget to come up. And if you keep picking in the cookie jar, one day it'll go away.
Okay, right.
So, I'm gonna ask you if I've got that correct, are we, when we're doing a budget every year, are we looking to balance our budget? Or is that not a concern, we just go into the cookie jar every year? Are we trying to make a balanced budget to balance our C star? Or do we just not worry about a balanced budget and just keep going in the cookie jar?
We're trying not to dip into the cookie jar anymore than we have to, but there are certain conditions in emergency situations that come up. If, for example, we have a real hard winter, our roads department might spend more money because of snow. If we have a very easy summer, you know, we don't have to spend so much money on snow. So, you have to have money set aside on your budget for that type, did I say?
You said summer, summer, that sounds perfect example.
That's why I'm here.
But again, though.
I'm saying if you have ups and downs, would you have ups and downs in different departments?
But you do budget X amount of dollars for snow removal, or?
Yes, we do.
X amount of dollars for?
And hopefully we have a good winter so that we don't have to spend it all.
And so what happens?
Hopefully we have a good summer so we don't have to spray the ski vis.
If we do have a good winter, then does that money stay in some sort of best roll fund for the next year, does it roll over?
It's a budget, so it's in a general fund and it will, if we have excess funds, it rolls over, if we have not enough funds to make it through the entire year, we have to take the cap. And what we're basing is that there's a greater potential today of dipping into our cash reserve than we have. The trend is down, we're, we're providing more services than what we can afford with a locked in budget.
More expensive because of the price of gas, yeah.
There's a lot of factors, fuel, everything is a factor. As we see higher expenses, naturally it takes more money than the city.
Was that a consideration when we got our police cars that were all gas hog? I'm sorry, I'm a conservative and I live within a budget and I just can't see, why did we get gas hogs and not like a regular Dodge Charger or something a little less, can't see or, I mean, we are.
What they're trying to do, Paul, to keep things moving, we, we asked that, we weren't going to get any specific items within the budget and I realize that that is a concern and, and a, uh, a sore spot, I think, within the city. We're trying to deal with the vehicles we're authorized and we'll take responsibility for them, uh, what we're looking at now is how we, uh, try to fix those trends.
How do you play the gas?
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go back here. Please. I'll, I'll be, okay, that's good.
My name's Amy Mee, I just have two questions to start with, um, I know you're, I know you're good with the numbers, but the question is, have you looked at other cities in the state of Nebraska that are the same size? That are contracted to the local sheriff's department and are you able to look at a level of satisfaction that you have a difficult time seeing how it contains a new amount of services? Your, uh, sheriff's department is covering a wide range. I think of Halloween, the ride on Eighteenth Street, and it's the police department that is out there. I watch these kids and I can call places and they're there. Will the sheriff's department really be able to provide that kind of stuff? And I know that's Halloween, it's a greater activity than a normal night, but, um, that's a concern I have. Are there other cities that are the same size as Oregon, you're trying to constantly attract more people to come to work? And you're not supporting the police department. So, tho- those are concerns to me, but how does that, we let them sleep or we can't afford to pay or the base that we contracted out? And the other question I have is, when you say there's going to be twenty-four second coverage, does that mean someone on duty or does that mean someone on call?
I can start with that, um, through the proposal by the county, like Bob stated as well, there's someone just for four. There will be someone here, it has nothing to do with what they're doing in the county, that will not change, we're paying for someone in Oregon. And I like, like I said, apples to apples, okay, if I can contract for the same number of hours a day that are covered, what we currently cover this year, and I can do it for anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less. To me, that's almost a bill breaker, I mean, yes, you're gonna lose some control percent, fifty-one percent of the population of Valley County lives within Oregon. So, citizens' wards can take control if they choose to do so, that's a fact. But, like I said, I'm not willing to say, let's only do six thousand, two hundred and forty hours and have three thousand hours, not that they wouldn't be there on Halloween, I'm sure they would, but, you know. From what we're getting now, as far as specifics and obviously with your husband being state controlman, I said, there are hours and shifts, but I grew up next to Jared Smith, so I got to do with his car between an hour. You know, but that you have to have other, where could we, we would have to set say, and I think it's actually one hour more per day of actual someone in Oregon, wheels on the ground, to be there. So actually we're gaining three hundred and sixty-five hours a year and that's what I said, the proposal that, that we have is that where can we save money and not lose services? Because again, I don't want to cut services, you know, we've had the pool ride up, we've had things that do not lose money, it's probably a life issue and stuff like that, do you want to, we talked about that earlier this year about pool. I mean, there's ways to do it, but where are you gonna try to save money and not lose service? Do we lose some patrol, definitely, I mean, you know, isn't it as easy as, you know, the police chief's there, helps up and, and does whatever, you know, I mean. Hopefully through, if it does go through or whatever, that would be something that would be in a contract with the county and obviously with the board, some members of the city council and Valley County Board of Commissioners to work that out. And then those boards would actually be on whatever basis, whoever it is, seems fit.
I guess I'll touch on the first question, was, you know, are we concerned about consolidation and yes, we are, there's not an animus support for this proposal and right now it is, or is the proposal something that we're looking at? Uh, you know, if we got another way out, I think we'd like to look at that, I don't know that anybody's really, I've not voted, you know, on the proposal yet, but I mean, that's a couple, you know, with the city council, the city on budget. Uh, are there things we can do once the budget's approved, I think there are. Uh, nothing's confirmed with me and I'm speaking for myself only now, uh, not for the council or for the city, but we have to negotiate a contract with the county. I'm comfortable with doing, like, like, going with the county and discussing, but, you know, there are issues we have to look at in terms that we all have and then it comes down to a vote of the council. And, uh, I'm not stupid.
Can, can answer to your one other question about if other communities have done it and it worked, um, if Mayor Goldfish were here, he has stated to me that he has checked that out, the early house that have tried it. And he said that the majority of those communities said it did not work. And that's his opinion and I'm sure if he was here, he would be telling that. So, we did get that, this is what I'm getting.
Did that answer your question, okay, go ahead, I'd like you to come forward.
I need no, uh, volume, all, all be well enough. The question I ask is, if the city council and supervisor approve this merger, do the county, do we have a vote on this? I, I live in Larry County, I didn't, I live in, I live in Larry County, do the county? Does the county have a vote on this, if the city council and supervisor approve this, or not?
As far as I understand, uh, we can enter into a contract or an interlocal agreement with the county board.
Does that vote of the county?
I, I'm not there that we have to take it to any kind of a vote of the county. If I'm wrong, I, I apologize, but I am not aware that we would have to take a vote. It is going to be a negotiated contract and interlocal agreement between the city and the county, just as we did with our communications contract.
One other clarification, if our...
Did that answer your question?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Did that answer your question?
He didn't answer your question either, no.
Okay, we'll take the point.
One other clarification, our police officers would then go to the county under the county sheriff? That leaves our city budget, that money, but as taxpayers, would our county taxes then go up to absorb the inflow of our local policemen?
Bob talked about that.
I know, and I need a clarification on it.
Bob, you want to talk about that again, real quick? The proposal for the city to pay for the three additional officers and all related expenses, and no county taxes would not be any part of that. But...
Oh, yeah, I don't think, uh, what you're suggesting, I don't think it would be legal or be something to use by the area. So, no, you wouldn't have vote, the way I understand, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm ninety percent sure that would be the case, we would negotiate a contract.
None of the county's budget that it currently has would be used for, for police protection.
Oh, correct, okay.
It goes on the negotiations. We haven't entered into a contract yet. John?
I've got one question, and I know Dan and Bush will hear you cover this. Whatever happened, I need to put my budget in, and you guys are going to bet, well, yeah, looks pretty good, but here's what you're going to deal. And you've got...
Yeah. We considered that.
Apparently, that doesn't happen.
We considered, all those, all those items are not new to us. We've looked into each and every one, so far, they've been mentioned. I'm still looking for the silver bullet and the, you know, suggestion on how we can do this without hurting anybody or any services. And, uh, so far, I haven't heard any alternative options. I'm, I'm still waiting for that silver bullet to come from this group, that's what we're hoping for.
And they did, they did make several cuts in all of them.
All of them, yes. We've been working on this for quite a while. Okay?
Looking, reading over the minutes of the, of the, the legislature meeting, you addressed, uh, the, uh, what it would take to cover the total deficits, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It says here to ask the board to run the numbers, and it came out to about three hundred and twenty-two dollars per one hundred thousand dollar household.
That's only if there was a tax, you had a tailwind meeting or a special vote to raise eleven. And that's only, if it's, that's, budget's just proposed, and so hopefully, like I said, it's out there, it's a number you don't want to get there. If you get passed there, you have to have a special meeting, go pass your budget, that's again, the government council shut down for the council committee.
I don't think, I'm picking up that a lot of people understood that.
This isn't not going to raise your taxes if the consolidation has nothing to do with that's going to raise your taxes. The county, or in all my...
If consolidation does not occur.
If consolidation does not occur, then we either have to look at services, other things, or both, you know, we might, other silver bullet somewhere too. Or the other...
Which is probably Keno, which we eat.
We'd like to let it go.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess that's...
We're running out of time for a town hall meeting.
Okay, correct.
And so, uh, so if we pass a current budget with a known possible loss and add reserve, we could get through a year, then possibly start a town hall each year. With the, with the schedule that we got, I just don't see a town hall meeting with a possible loss. And I don't know how supportive, you know, that's not really how...
Have you had twenty days?
Have we looked into it?
I think it's only twenty days.
I need to answer that, but I'm cheap.
This has been sort of like I said, I believe so.
And I know it's an option that some of the smaller communities, smaller communities, run town hall meetings for a number of years, I'm not sure. The library has held town hall meetings, old room, or levees, on some off-lit county, and that doesn't... It is an option we discussed, I don't know that we have time.
It's an option.
One of the biggest drawbacks that I, you know, I've talked to Roger and Sub Two and Dan and them about doing this is, once you do it, you can never come back. Because of all your equipment and everything else. In the proposal from the county, after three years or two thousand fourteen, when it would be there, we would actually get our equipment back if we so desired, and we could start up. We just have to hire officers to go forward with that. And again, he says, I'm about a six-month opt-out, so it could be, if that was wrote in there, again, this is all just proposed, it can be sooner than that. If, you know, we started down that road, and it was the worst idea ever, um, you know, we can get out of it and say, hey, we're better off going the other way. I said, I'm a numbers person, I said, when I went through this, I looked where we could cut the most without losing services. That's where, like I said, there will be someone in order, on the, you know, out and about, just as much as there is now, if you go with the proposal. And we will save one hundred and twenty thousand off the revised budget if they get there in hours compared to here.
I guess, again, the reading from the minutes said Chief Miller was in favor of consolidation rather than funding services. I'm just gonna answer that.
That was probably a comment that would be after the fact, if ever I, yeah, I don't know that that was a...
Yeah, I think it went to two people. Yeah, he said, he said he would rather see, and I probably got it wrong, and Adam's here to speak to me.
Yeah, I prefer that, I feel.
Yeah, I was reading.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions, suggestions?
Captain.
Correct. We have one more. Okay, turn.
My name's Karen Turner. You said that, um, if the consolidation goes forward, that there would be a officer on duty as much as there is now. Do you know how many hours exactly we spend on duty? Do you know what time they go off duty in the morning?
Through looking at, once it comes over there, I have hours that they, that they're to work, I mean, I know what those are from talking to Adam.
But do you know what time they actually go off duty in the morning?
That's up to the police chief and the schedule, and he...
So, in other words, you don't know?
We don't improve the schedule, but we, we've got the hours worked. If you want, in general, if you're asking, what time do they go on, what time do they go off?
No, I, I'm just, I'm just asking, do you know what time they go off duty in the morning?
I think it varies, I, I hope it varies, I don't know that we want to keep a set schedule. So, I don't know that that's a question we can answer. We can give you total hours, but I don't know that we can give you...
I just asked one simple question, thank you.
We can give you last week's schedule, I don't know if we want to. There's certain things we want to make public, there's certain things we don't want to make public. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the council?
I just wanted to say that everything's still on the table. I can mention the board, benefits, wages, there's still lots that can come. This isn't just a collection.
Yeah.
Paul, did you have a chance to...
With what?
About that, I have, give me numbers, take it, who am I generating?
Really, I'm doing some research on Keno, um, it, we had more on the menu up here. We didn't see North Loop actually brought in more money monthly than we, we, quite a bit more, so, um, no, we really don't have it.
North Loop's got all over the board, wherever, fifty, two, thirty dollars, just years. We're looking at...
Could be a good thing, I think, that's gonna make that a difference.
Oh.
You can't, you can't count on that.
You can't count on it, so it's, it's not a guaranteed continuing revenue.
And I, I guess my thought, me personally, on Keno is more, not so much, there's a budget problem as it is to parks and recreation and things like that. Cool, you know, there's a different, I mean, this isn't a budget fix, it's more of a community development tool. And what, how I look at it, I'm higher than that.
Is there a concern like in North Loop? I lived there for twelve years before coming to Orange, and I really, within that little community, I would say the poverty level, as rats are hot. And I still have relatives down there, and I guess my concern is this, it's a high level of poverty, the checks come in, and it goes straight into gambling. And I feel that's a moral decay, and I don't find pride in raising money with people becoming victims from addiction to gambling. And that is my, I think, is a matter of honor, is a matter of pride that we as a community must maintain, because we cannot gather wealth off an addiction or a melody that goes with gambling. And I don't find that healthy.
Yeah, and I think we're swaying those, that's, it'll come down to a vote of people, and it'll be the, the decision of the community whether we get people. Uh, it's just something that we've looked at and, and probably, uh, consider once again. But it's not a done deal, we're not counting on it. If it passes, the private, you know, they can do with, or go do something with the revenue, but it's not...
Do you think it's about time to close?
You got to be great, all of us.
Okay. Anyone else in the council? I want to make sure all the council members, any comments? Any additional comments, questions, or suggestions from the citizens? If not, uh, I appreciate everyone showing up tonight, I appreciate the open dialogue, I, you know, particularly appreciate the courtesy that you've shown everyone, I think it was very well done, so, I do thank you for that. You each have an opportunity to talk to us one-on-one as well, we wanted to do this in all but one. So, again, as was mentioned a number of times, the budget is not defined, uh, it is still under consideration. We are still looking at other options and opportunities, and, uh, the scheduled hearing will be September seventh at seven forty-five P.M. at the city hall. John? I think Jay did touch on some of those in his opening comments, but, you know, we're looking at salaries, benefits, uh, where's that, this, uh, the Keno being an opportunity, uh, some changes to golf course, uh...
Consolidation.
Of departments eventually, I mean, you know, there's, there's funds that we still have available that could be used on a temporary basis, but only as a band-aid, not as a long-term solution. So, if we wanted to postpone our decisions on some of the major things, I think we still have a lot to look at, and I don't know that it's going to solve the problems. So, I'm hoping, uh, personally, that, you know, we come to some type of conclusion on this budget to face the deficits that we're having now. But, uh, yeah, it, it's still kind of up in the air, and it really comes down to the mayor deciding whether we want to pursue further negotiations on this, or, or just take it to the September hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
One last question, uh, Mayor mentioned about different areas cutting, and brought to my mind the attention of, like, we provide our people who work for our community healthcare, do we not? Do they have, do they co-pay any part of their hospital?
All of those options are being looked at.
But right now, we're paying the full medical bill, is...
I don't believe so.
Do they pay a co-pay for their monthly premium?
If you want the details on those kinds of things, I'm going to have to refer you to Sandy or city clerk, because I don't have the specific details on all of that.
Well, I just wondered as part of a budget...
We're looking at all of the situations.
The way it's at the hospital, do they pay a part of their whole?
It is under consideration. No other questions or comments? I appreciate you coming out tonight.